Well, good evening, everyone. Welcome to the September 19th meeting of the Foxborough School Committee. Thank you all for tuning in on the airwaves and thank you all for here in the audience as well. Before we do open public comment, just wanted to, if I keep my eyes straight here, I wanted to just tell you my thoughts and prayers and our committee are with the Offlet family at this time. Jack, just a great icon and his wife and just, you know, an end of a very, very wonderful era and a great person, so just wanted to make sure he mentioned that. Thank you. I didn't see anyone on the public comments sheet unless I missed someone. Anyone came in late, signed up? Thank you for telling me. Thank you. We'll go right to the superintendent's update.
Okay. So I have a number of things, being that we are in our third week of school, second full week, so it has been a great start to the school year. The last time we met was like right on the eve of school starting. And it's just been a great start. And you have in your packet under information your enrollment, as far as just kind of an update there. So I thought I would start there. Our enrollment continues to stay pretty consistent from year to year. When we look at where we ended in June and where we are now, we are up 22 students. That is September 5th. Our October 1st number is really what's important and we know we have a number of new families at the hotel. And those 28 students are not included in that number, so they will be for our October 1st number. Looking back, I think it's interesting to see over the last couple of years, we talk about this at budget time, but where our numbers go from year to year, they fluctuate during the school year, obviously, but where we go from June to June or September to September, we run anywhere from a difference of 20 to 50 students typically. And we are expecting more families starting next week at the hotel with the additional 59 rooms. We don't have any idea how many school-aged children that will be joining us. Those that did join us, again, 28 students at this point in time. We've got, it's really split, 14 at the elementary level and 14 at the secondary level. And that is not just students that are coming from Haiti, that's also, it is also homeless students as well as students that are considered migrant students. Been working very closely, the National Guard is now on site at the hotel, which has been great for communication and for logistics and really assessing what the family needs are. As I've mentioned before, being on the task force where we have all of our public safety, human services departments, everyone in the town, honestly, that are in leadership positions, we've been meeting weekly as far as assessing the needs. And one of those things has been donations that continue to be questioned. There's going to be a drive coming up in October and it will be orchestrated in partnership with the Y, but it will go through the Ahern bus circle, if you will. So some groups have asked, well, if we want to do our own drives, how can we do that and still participate and meet the needs? It really is, if people are wanting to do separate drives, it's going to be then bringing that on the 14th of October when we have that. Information will go out to what the specific needs are as well, because with the Y drive that's been going out, for instance, there's been diapers and those kinds of things, and people have been really generous in dropping those off at the Y, but we've been assessing more specifically by family and what the needs are, and we'll communicate that on the information that goes out for the October drive. Other things that are going on this week, the high school open house has taken place this evening. We had elementary open houses last week, which were greatly attended by families, teachers, their classrooms looked fabulous, children got to introduce their parents to their teachers and their learning spaces, and it was exciting. We've got the Ahern open houses tomorrow night for 5th, actually 7th and 8th grade tomorrow night, and then 5th and 6th grade the following night. So again, an opportunity to meet the teachers and children to be able to show their parents, their classrooms, and the building if they're new to Foxborough as well. I sent out an email last night, I believe, I think it was last night, on community coffee hours with the superintendent, so those will be coming up in October, December, and February. Those dates, we host those over at the Boydin Library. Another evening that I wanted to mention that will be sent out is Community Cousins Meet and Greet, and it's part of our Metco program, and it's for families of our students that are in the Metco program, but it's also for resident families that are interested in being a host family. So when we think about students that are in town and they're here for sporting events or other activities and things, to be able to have a host family and not going back to Boston. So it's really a great connection to get to know our students and then also be an assistance when it comes to any of the other events that they might be involved in. So that will be coming out as well. Flu clinic, I sent that out, that's coming up, thanks to our partners here in public safety, that's the Ahern from 3:00 to 6:00 on the 13th. And other things that I just wanted to mention, just because to watch for them that will be coming out, a lot of these things, interestingly, were planned before we knew our families were going to be joining us at the hotel. And that's the Boydin Library and the presentations of different films that they have, so here's kind of a visual, but this will go out by email, and these are different films that is really focused on, like for instance, one of them is "Refugees Are Mothers, Fathers, Sisters, Brothers: Children With The Same Hopes And Ambitions As Us, Except That A Twist Of Fate Has Bound Their Lives To A Global Refugee Crisis On An Unprecedented Scale." So coming up on the 16th, there'll be "Peace By Chocolate," which is based on an inspirational true story. Then October 30th, "Human Flow," which is another film that will be presented. And these will also be able to be accessed. If you can't go there for that, there'll be information on how you'll be able to watch them through different links, so I'll share that from the library. Also, the Marilyn Rodman Performing Community Center in town is going to be hosting on Sunday, October 1st, "Welcome For Families," and it's a concert that was again planned ahead, and they've added an additional concert, which is traditional Haitian music. And Mark Craig is going to be helping us with transportation for families to be able to come and other families to come and to join in for music and food on that Sunday. So lots of emails will be sent out with that information, and we'll send out reminders, it'll come out from myself, but it'll also be reiterated through schools. And something to watch for, because some great opportunities to learn more about our families that have been joining us. And then, again, that October date, a lot of people have asked about how to donate, and that's going to have really specific information.
Thank you.
I think that pretty much covers it. Any questions?
Related?
Questions or comments for me?
Just related, I don't, have you heard anything from our adjoining districts in terms of the influx that they're seeing? I'm just curious.
So when, I met with them on Friday, and at this point right now, the only other district that has the number of families that we're seeing right now is Franklin.
Sure.
Smaller numbers, but again, they're, it's changing daily. What I do know from speaking with my colleagues is our task force here in Foxborough, when we think about having our fire chief, our police chief, our director of human services, like all of those people that are at the table, I could, I'm afraid if I started to continue to name them, I'd miss somebody. It's just that really concentrated effort to collaborate together, but to really leverage resources in the town, that's the difference with Foxborough and what I'm hearing from my colleagues. I'm also hearing as far as our approach to getting students enrolled right away. We were able to get students enrolled quickly. Our L teachers went over to do the assessments that they needed to do from a language. We have students that arrive regularly, believe it or not, when we think about our L population, and you'll hear a little bit about that in a later agenda item, as far as our numbers and how that's increased. But I just, the town of Foxborough and all of the people that sit on that task force and what they've done to be able to come together and the town as a whole, it really is quite impressive.
Could you just tell everyone what L is? I know what it is. English language.
English language learner.
Some people might not know what you mean when you say L.
Yes, thank you. So any student that comes, and this happens, it's not just now. We have students that arrive and English is not their first language and they do not speak English at all. So we've increased our number of English language learner teachers, and we're increasing now as a result of having more families through the migrant crisis. One other thing that I would like to mention, because it is something, it's emails that I've received, I don't know you as committee members, if you've received that as well. There is a question when it comes to health and safety, and I think it's really important for people to understand that we always take health and safety as our number one priority, and that all families, they go through a health screening with official, public health officials upon arrival. So there is not any concern when it comes to the schools. And I, some of the emails that I've received by myself and others, I think that it's really important to mention that, that there's not any, there's not any concern there.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you for that. Yeah, and just to say it again, ELL is an acronym, E-L-L. We say L very quickly, and we've talked about it in our meetings and stuff, but sometimes I think people listen, don't know what L means, and they think it's the letter L. So, yeah, just, and we've talked about English language learners for years, obviously, so thank you. Thank you. And thanks to your staff and everyone, and the staff, the police department, and fire, everything they do too. And just another shout out to our teachers and students to make it happen too, right? Integrating new students into the classroom, integrating new peers in their peer groups, that's always valuable too. So it's the whole climate and culture of what we do, what we stand for, and what we believe that makes us all work. So, thanks for being part of that, everyone. Anything else? All good? Great. Next topic is our school safety topic. We'd like to welcome Police Chief, Police Chief Grace and some of his staff members here, and please come on up and let's talk school safety. Thank you so much for being here.
Look at this table, is this not impressive?
Yeah, look at this!
Just gotta make sure we move the mics around.
Yeah.
So as Chief Grace is getting situated there, just as a reminder, we talk a lot about our partnership with our public safety officials, but it's also our school resource officers, our memorandum of understanding agreement, and the work that we do annually. So as part of that is having this beginning of the school year, update, if you will, of things that have been taking place, and then anything that's new as well.
You ready?
Yes, go.
I know the clock's running, I got 20 minutes, we're gonna go as fast as we can.
No, no, we're good to go, we're good to go. We're ahead already.
All right, excellent. So I just want to thank the board, our superintendent, Dr. Burdo's, Assistant Superintendent Stephanie, I'm sorry, Dr. Burdo's Superintendent Stephanie Burrows, and all the parents at home watching and inviting the police department here today. I do want to make a joke for the first time in 15 years, I've missed open house. Okay, so I'm gonna pay for that, but I won't miss parent conferences because it is running right now at the high school, so. With me tonight, I have Christina LaRose, Lieutenant John Chamberlain, Sergeant Megan Allen, Officer Will Monterosso, and Officer Joe Godino, and missing is Officer Frank Azavito who had childcare issues. But before we start, I just want to have each one of them introduce themselves and their role within our agency, starting with Christina.
Hi, I'm Christina LaRose, I'm a clinical social worker, working with both the police and the fire.
Sergeant Megan Allen, I supervise the school resource officers and the domestic violence unit.
Lieutenant John Chamberlain, I'm in charge of patrol, and part of patrol is the SRO division.
Hi, I'm Will Monterosso, I'm one of the SROs in the unit.
I'm Joe Godino, I'm one of the school resource officers.
So now we're gonna expand on that, and we're gonna actually talk about what you actually do in the agency, so we'll redo it one more time and we'll expand on beyond just the title and rank. You ready, Christine?
I'm ready.
You're ready, all right.
Am I up?
You're up.
I'm up, this is it. So as a clinical social worker, I got hired at the end of February, working with both police and fire. I've been working a lot with the school resource officers in terms of follow-up activities, you know, children that might be struggling at home or having issues at school, so trying to work with the families and the school resource officers to partner and pair with other resources that might be relevant to them. There's some follow-up activities happening with some of the school social workers as well. A lot of what I've been doing has been in the community after hours, after school's out, you know, responding to the homes of these families, trying to offer support and resources along with the officers that are responding. So, you know, my responses can look very different in a lot of different situations, but I think it's been a really great addition to public safety in terms of helping these families. There's not always enough time in the day to follow up and provide resources, so I think it's been a great marriage that way, and learning all of the new resources that I'm opening myself up to in this position. And it's just been a great, a great start here, so thank you.
Thank you.
Patrol, as you know, is the uniformed division, it's the Monday to Friday, Monday, seven days a week, every day, the patrol officer driving around. Part of that is the SROs. Sergeant Allen, I oversee her, she has any issue, she lets me know. And like Chief Grace, my kids have either all attended Foxborough schools or they're in there right now, so we take our roles very serious, the safety and the welfare of the citizens of Foxborough for the kids.
Thanks.
So again, Sergeant Megan Allen, you may recognize me from last year, was previously an SRO, as well as a domestic violence officer. Since making rank, I now oversee both of those divisions in addition to sometimes supervising the day shift patrol unit. So I have to echo what Dr. Burdo said, I think in the three years that I've been in the schools, this has been, and granted, I think we all know, it was a little bit rough for a couple of years outside of any of our control, but this really has been such a smooth start to the school year from what I've been able to see, you know, all things considered. So just a little bit more about kind of my role as far as supervising the school resource officers. I'm still ingrained in the schools, I joke with them, they couldn't get rid of me that easy. I do still love being in the schools and staying connected with the kids, with the staff members. So I'm still in the mix a little bit, but other than that, primarily my duties as a supervisor are to approve reports, make sure that things are going smoothly, handle any complaints, any issues across the board. I'll just add that, you know, my role as the supervisor of the domestic violence unit, there is a lot of overlap, as I'm sure you can imagine, just between any issues with, you know, violence affecting people in the home, and how that overlaps with maybe, you know, some issues that we see in the schools. I will say, Ms. LaRose and I work hand in hand in both capacities, really, between the schools and the domestic violence unit. I think one of the greatest things that we kind of have going for us right now is the collaboration that we have, and again, to echo a point made earlier by Dr. Burdo's, is the use of multidisciplinary teams to tackle problems has been huge for us. So having a clinician in the public safety building has been a complete game changer for us, being able to collaborate with clinical social workers and then collaborate with our other community partners, partners at the Norfolk County District Attorney's Office, their advocates, their mental health support resources, as well as some of our other local community-based services agencies like New Hope, the Quincy Family Resource Center, just to name a couple. I will say, I'm not plugging anybody, but we do have a community resource guide that we operate off of that is about 25 pages in length, broken up by different areas, anything that, you know, our community members might need. We try to make sure we have at least a list of a few resources, whether it be transportation needs, you know, utility support, things like that. So again, I think it's been a great start to the school year, and we're looking forward to another one.
Thank you. Will?
How you doing? So I'm Will Monterosso, I'll let you tell you a little bit of myself. This is my 21st year in law enforcement, my 21st year in law enforcement. I started off in Attleboro, then I transferred here in 2016. The first two years I worked midnight, and then I became one of the SROs. So I've been in the schools about five years now, and I'm the liaison between the charter school and the police department. And I'll let you know a couple of things that we do with the schools. While school's in session, we started a program called Protect and Serve. So we go into the schools, usually it's the lower schools, elementary schools, middle schools. We help serve lunches to the kids, right? So that we, the kids have a face that is not in a cruiser, that is not on a road detail. They're in school, so they see us in that capacity, that we are serving them lunch, we're protecting and serving them, right? So that's where the little name comes. We do High Five Fridays, so at the elementary schools and the middle schools on Friday morning, when they get dropped off by parents or buses, we stand out there with a group of officers with foam hands and we give them high fives. So we, you know, we wish them a happy Friday, blah, 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 let them get started on a Friday in good spirits. Also, we do a lot of the across, Read Across America Week. We go into classrooms, we help some of the teachers read books to the students. We also help out with the fire alarms, the evacuation drills with the bus drills. So we partner up with the transportation division, we set those things up, we partner up with the fire department for the fire alarms. And we also, we go into the classrooms and we give social media presentations on the do's and don'ts, on how to not become a victim with, through social media. We also go in, we do presentation on bullying and how to prevent it and how to, not to be a victim of bullying too. We also, we're going, I'm gonna start doing eventually rail safety. We have a rail system here in Foxborough, I'm gonna partner up with Amtrak police, and we're gonna come in and do, I think we did, like three or four years ago, we did that, if you remember. We're gonna restart that again. And also, we also attend dances and proms, things of that nature. So those are kind of the things, what we do while class or in schools in session. And I think Officer Godino's gonna talk about what we do when classes are out.
Thank you.
Can we just give you a bio first and then go into that later?
Do it all together, if you want.
All right. We can go off.
Sounds good to me. I'm Joe Godino, I've been in law enforcement now 17 years. Prior to coming to Foxborough, in 2019, I was with the city of Framingham Police Department, where I served there for 13 years. There, I served in various roles of housing officer, street crimes officer, I was in the general duties detectives, I was assigned to a drug unit, and then I went to a drug task force prior to leaving to come over here, so. And I was also the association president there, so we did, I was in charge of doing all the charitable events, all the different stuff throughout town, all the shop with the cop type of stuff that we did over there, events that we did over there. So I think I spoke last year, because this is my second year in the schools, about how when this opportunity was presented, I, you know, I reached out to one of our lieutenants, who's now a chief in Bellingham, said, hey, I'd be interested in this. You know, I had a pretty positive experience with my school resource officer when I was in school. He was our football coach, he was a dare officer, but he was a positive influence. You know, I have a family in law enforcement, but it just reinforced my desire to get into it. And I always look back at that, it was one of the reasons why I thought, hey, now it's my time to hopefully be a positive influence in the Foxborough community. With that said, I, this year, I'm basically overseeing the Ahern school, although we all fluctuate through all the different schools. I'm at the Ahern school this year in the elementary schools, primarily Officer Frank handles the high school, and he's a backup to the other elementary schools also. So we all kind of just do dual roles, she'll see us at different schools. Two of the initiatives I just want to highlight that we are a part of, so last year, we pitched this pilot program, the Junior Police Academy. When we, we didn't know how many kids we were gonna have at first, we thought about 20, we thought about 30, well, we got nearly 60 kids that reached out, and within a few hours of launching the link to have a junior police academy, it was ages, well kindergarten, first grade, we had well, I think over 60. We had a kind of waitlisted because we didn't have enough staff to kind of run it.
That was just one school, too?
Yeah, that was just one school. So we pitched this idea of trying to have a little junior police academy through K through 1 at the Taylor School. We ran it four weeks in May, every Monday after school from 3:00 to 4:00 p.m. We all took part in it. We taught them how to, you know, do drills, we taught them how to march, we taught them the oath of the academy, so we had, every week we'd repeat the oath. We had presenters come in, they covered the drone, drones, canine comfort dogs, where the detectives go for fingerprinting with them, when an animal control officer came in, so they were able to see a bunch of different aspects of law enforcement. And then finally, we had a graduation where we had them stand up front, in front of their parents, in front of the Taylor School, repeat their oath, and then the chief swore them in and gave them little certificates, and I think it was a great time. We had a little show and tell outside with all of our units and all of our cars, and it's something that, you know, hopefully we might be able to be expanding to, bringing it to the middle school age or the high school age. Like I said, I came from Framingham, they run weekly, a week-long academy for middle school age and high school age, where it's a 40-hour, eight hours a day, the kids get certified in CPR and a bunch of other different things. So that's, obviously that was the goal at some point, but we had to do baby steps and introduce the pilot program to see where we go from there. Just another quick initiative that we're starting this year is, we pitched to the chief about attending the five away games for the Foxborough High School. So you'll see, the school resource officers are now attending the away games. We went to Holliston two weeks ago, last Friday, we were there for the big win against North Attleboro in the crowd, and obviously this serves a bunch of different purposes, which I'll just highlight real quick, that obviously enhances the safety and security of the event, you know, obviously positive community interactions, role modeling mentorship, obviously we see people outside the school environment, building skill, community connections, they're seeing familiar faces, sometimes they don't see Officer Will because he's covering the charter school, or I'm at the Ahern school, but we do get around to different schools, and we do see kids that we've seen at those schools at the other schools. And finally, we're just obviously a resource to the host police department. We, you know, we touch base with them, we let the A.D. know, we walk around, we meet new people, and if there's any issues, we obviously notify the staff there. We had some, the big victory on Friday, a lot of the kids wanted to storm the field, and we tried to obviously calm them down from doing that, but those are just two of the initiatives. We have a bunch of other things in the works, but I just want to highlight those two. So, again.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, back to the partnership, I think I've already heard it three or four times. I can't speak enough about the partnership between the Foxborough Public Schools and Foxborough Police Department. The support's never been stronger between the two agencies, and I can tell you, the police department will always invest in protecting and supporting the students of this great town. There is no higher mission than protecting children. It's an absolute no-brainer as a police chief, it's a mission and it's a goal, and it's always gonna be a priority. To the point of, the police department last year, or the year before, give or take, between fiscal years, was actually restructured within how we roll out our deployment to develop the SRO program. So the SRO program delivers the same services than the entire shift that's occurring right now. So the amount of staff that have been allocated to all the schools and all the kids in the town equals what the patrol division is rolling out, just because of what we've seen and the need and how we want to support the school district at every level. But I do want to be 100% clear that support and partnership doesn't mean that we're over policing or participating in any school disciplinary actions or investigations, okay? That's, I just want to make sure that people, that we're filling the schools so we can go police them. That's not. We know their role, and I'll be the first to say, we're gonna stay in our lane, okay? The school will do the school, and we'll do the police stuff. This year, with, from the police perspective, at a larger level, there's been some big changes in regards to security and safety at a state level. The Mass Chiefs, Police Association, and I'm gonna pronounce it wrong, but the school superintendents group as well, have combined for the first time ever to develop a best practice guide for school security. This has never happened, there's never been a model or a guide that every police department and every school district can refer to, to enhancing their school safety. I have an hour presentation on that, and I know I'm limited, so as a police chief with Mass Chiefs, I'm one of the lead members of the working group that kind of spearheaded this, working with the superintendents and the other police chiefs across the state to actually develop, produce, and roll out the manual. This manual is specifically designed for the school districts. So many times, we see so many different ideas, so many different vendors, so many different theories about how we can make our schools safer, but this actually has checklists and guidelines that the district can use, check what they're doing, and see if they're meeting the level. If they're not meeting the level, it's something that they can plan for, or they can increase the level to a tier one, tier two, tier three, tier four. So that is a very brief overview on that, but I just want to talk about where it came from, is obviously the landscape has changed with school safety. It's always a growing concern, the mental health issues, alcohol, drugs, dysfunctional families, access to weapons, it all ends up potentially at the door of a school. And we have to make sure that we are doing our And we have to make sure that we are doing our best to protect the schools. School violence that we're seeing across the country, shootings are a four-hundred-and-ten percent. That's alarming, for sure. So we don't wanna be reactive, we wanna have mitigation, we wanna have processes in place to do our best to soften, to harden a soft target. Part of building this guideline was taking the best practices throughout the whole country, Department of Justice, FBI, Secret Service, working through it, didn't have to recreate the wheel on some stuff, but utilized and injected what we felt would work best in the Commonwealth of Mass. And it's been very successful. A couple items to talk about, within the guide is they talk about collaboration, assessment, prevention, mitigation, response. So when you look at the very first need to developing the partnership, it's called collaboration, I can tell you, some towns struggle with this. I sit here today, I can almost check that off, and let's get to the second one, because that's, we're hitting that at every level. So, so as a town, as a parent sitting at home, wanna know if your school's talking to your police department, they are, at every level, at every bump, at every turn. And lastly, is on a very, very brief overview, the guideline defines what areas we should be looking at. So what it does is it looks at the district-wide, it breaks it down to the property of the school, the parking lot and the perimeter, the building itself, and then to the classroom.
Sure.
So it identifies those five very particular items to focus on. I feel like a lot of questions are coming. You ready?
No, not questions.
No, no?
No, I'm just still turning.
And within the guideline is a checklist, which is a workable checklist that the school can go through, partnered with the police department, covering everything from those five, from technology to physical changes that they can make. It's, it's very dynamic, but it's very measurable, to know where you are today and how do you get somewhere tomorrow, instead of just tackling a theory. So that was a lot of, that was a big lift this year, and it was completed, and the schools have it, and it's something we're gonna be able to work with. And it will be revised annually between the superintendents and the Mass Chiefs. If we see a trend, if we see a change that we have to address, we'll, and then resubmit it out to all our members throughout the whole state. Another topic I'd like to throw out there is the police department, probably this week, will be rolling out our body cameras on our offices. It'll be a slow rollout, but I do want the schools to be aware that our SROs will be wearing their body cameras, and eventually all the offices, anyone responding to a call from the police department will have their body camera on. We have a policy within place, obviously any information captured from a body camera involving juveniles, it's all subject to the same laws and sharing that are currently in place now. And the offices will only be activating the body cameras when they're in the capacity of a police service or a function. So if you're just walking around the school, you're not turning your body camera on. But, you know, if you had a big fight in the cafeteria, you know, that's, I'm talking about my time in high school, that was something that occurred on a regular basis, right?
It did not. It did not.
They had the smoking section when I was in high school, okay?
I know, I know, I know they did, I know.
So, and we'll work through it, and if there's any issues, anything that we are challenged with, we will deal with it and, and work it out. And essentially, that's a very quick overview of where we are today and where we wanna be tomorrow with our SRO program and delivering it to all the schools in Foxborough, to all the kids. And again, if parents have information, the door's always open at the police department, we never close, three sixty-five, so come on down, we, if we, they can email us, contact us, talk to the SROs. Sergeant Allen is in direct communication with every principal, every administrator, all the time, so this system develops communication. There's never a, a school administrator going, how do I get in contact with the police department? All of that's been laid out, depending on the variety or, or the need, whether it's a low level or an emergency.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Questions, anyone?
I do. A couple of comments first, so thank you all very much. It's comforting, it's exciting, it's interesting just from a, you know, human interest standpoint to understand all the things that are going on. Chief Grace, you did just say, you know, if people have questions, so if families, parents, members of the community have questions about some of the documents and checklist and templates that you've, that you've just talked about, what is the best way for them to get those questions answered? Is that coming through the police department, is it coming through the superintendent's office?
Either or. It's, it's a sheer document between, it's, it's, it's really designed for the district, for the school. Obviously, when we start talking about response plans, those are different than school security best practices guides. Those are, you know, two a critical incident, but, send them my way.
Okay.
Sure, I'll take them.
Okay. Thank you. Just 'cause I think people will have questions, you know, and it's, we know that the plans are there, but people, you know, there are people that really love the details, and there are some people that just wanna know that it's in place, right? So thank you for that. My last question, my last question is, we all know that we're lucky to live in Foxborough for so many different reasons, right? And part of, and the big pieces we've talked about, like probably at least a dozen mentioned so far in thirty-five minutes of, is the community and the way that we all cooperate and collaborate, right, to get the results that we want for all of the members of our community. My question to you guys, and Dr. Burdo, Sergeant Burdo, this is for y'all as well, as a school committee, right, we often, we, sometimes we don't ask this question enough, as a school committee, what can we do to continue to reinforce that collaboration and cooperation or to make it even more powerful than it already is? So are there specific things that we can do to support this continuing to be as successful as you all feel it is?
I can tell you right now, when I sit here, there's, there's been no hurdle, no wall, no door we haven't been able to get through, and if there, if there hasn't been, the communication, there's, there's, it's always, it's an open-door policy. If we have a, a, a theory or an idea or a direction we'd like to travel, let's sit down, how do we get there? It's, I can talk to the, to the troops, the boots on the ground, if they're in, having any challenges at, at a, at a school level, but I don't see any of those issues whatsoever with any of your administrators in the town of Foxborough. Dr. Burdo's has been fantastic, her whole team, you know, you kind of threw it on me. You wanna wish list, I can get back to you on that, but...
At some point, you know, if there are things that we can do as a school committee to, to make this more effective, and that wish, and that means a wish list, then I would like to know what that is, so that we can at least put in our vision for what we wanna do for our community. I mean, I think that's a realistic thing, can't promise anything, of course, but if there are things that can be done that we can support, I think we'd like to know them.
Can I say one thing? You don't know how special that question is, that there are so many cities and towns that can't get them. They can't get there.
Well, when, I forgot how long ago it was, there was a question similar to that, and you and, I mean, it was all answered and asked and answered publicly, but I think you and Dr. Burdo and Mr. Yuka had an exchange about adding to the SRO program, and this was now, what, we're talking two years ago or something like that? And forgive me for not knowing the dates, but like, and I remember, like, a question that came up, and you're like, yeah, we're looking to try to expand that, and that'll be ongoing, and here we are, now we have full expansion, and we couldn't be happier with that, and so, you know, so anyway. When you've been asked before, you've been pretty good with it, so that's great, keep it up.
And then Dr. Burdo, your turn.
The thing that comes to mind when I think about when we've had incidents as far as whether they're evacuation drills, or it's a matter of like last spring when we ended up having the lockdown because of the swatting calls, I think when you ask what can we do or what's important, is the message to continue to share that we do have this partnership, that safety is number one for us, and to trust that we have that and we're doing that. So when it comes to, for instance, parents that say, I, I want my child to text me, or they're calling the school, understand that we are doing what we need to do, and we will communicate information as quickly as we can, but we don't want someone to put up a challenge in front of us when we're trying to get that message out. And that sometimes texting back and forth with students, that makes it harder for us. Trust this partnership, trust that safety's number one, and that we are going to communicate as quickly and as efficiently and transparently as we can.
Thank you, that's important, right? I mean, it is important, and certainly as much as we can continue to reinforce that, I think we all will.
I think that's, I mean, I, I recall between you, Chief Grace, you, Dr. Burdo, and members of the committee, we were eager and excited to get, to, to, to put you, put you all on the docket annually, just to, just to talk about this stuff and hear what's going on, because I think it's just great public education broadly for everyone to hear. So, thank you.
And I, I also would just like to say, the Massachusetts Association of School Superintendents, so in the summer, all superintendents, assistant superintendents, we meet together at our summer institute, and school safety is obviously a, a very important topic to superintendents and schools. And when you have your own police chief onstage, presenting in front of all of those superintendents and assistant superintendents, it's a proud moment, but at the same time, when you're hearing what they're presenting on, we're like, we've done that, we've done that, we're there, we're prepared, we're proactive, we have the SRO plan, we have the officers that are there in preventative, whether it's Hi-Fi Fridays or serving lunch, to be able to have that image and visual for young children in particular, so when they see them out and about in the community, they're excited to see them. So it makes you feel as though you're prepared, the best that we can be, but we're always assessing any things that we've had and learning from that and making changes as we go forward. And that's that ongoing dialogue, whether it's with teachers that come forward and ask questions and say something, or principals, and it is ongoing. So when we get to pillar one, and our facilities and operations for the plan for success, that's part of it.
Right.
No, just thank you all for what you do. This has been going on for a few years, and every year I just watch the relationship get stronger and stronger and the two become more and more entangled, and I, I really do appreciate that, and it really does make me feel great about Foxborough and, you know, what we're putting together here. And also, this is the first time I am also missing the high school open house, so just wanna put that there.
We're gonna give you a pass.
Judy calls, right?
I'm gonna get the stink eye when I get home.
Thank you.
Yeah, I wanna, I wanna thank you all too, and I travel a lot of school districts in my job, all over the state, and it, it is very obvious to me there is a difference. I've been in some, there's no presence at all, some others that are probably not bad like this as well, but it's very obvious to me the difference that the collaboration in Foxborough has created. The other piece of the puzzle that really I appreciate today was this level of, of attention right from you through lieutenant, through sergeant, right down into the whole, the whole stratosphere, I guess, and, and then the social work. I think that's very impressive, because I, I think there, the school districts that fledge, fledge around with SROs, the SROs like flying around kind of loose, I think, too much, and that's not what you've structured here. You've engaged with them and integrated them, so I, I think it's a big difference. It's, it's very obvious to me, and your presentation is that way obvious, so we're just very fortunate, we really are. These are relationships that are being built because of attention and intent, and that's only gonna benefit us, it really is. So thank you so much.
And defining your boundaries, I think, is also very important, I, I like that too as well, I think that's huge part of it.
I wanted to say thank you for being so ambitious, seriously. I mean, we're not a big town, and like, but, and the, the fact you took these initiatives on of your own accord because you thought it'd be a good idea, that's what, I mean, that's, that's, that's the best form of public service you can provide, is always think, how can we make this better? And so, it just makes me proud, so thank you.
And congratulations to Sergeant Allen.
Yeah, there you go.
Congratulations, sir.
All right. Thank you very much. Good evening, everyone, thank you.
Have a drama-free evening.
Still early.
You can probably still make part of the open house.
You can probably, yeah.
I don't know, I'm not...
He looks pretty busy.
I'm not sure. I thought I had a schedule, and if I'm off, I'd be in trouble.
Thank you.
I don't wanna be showing up at quarter midnight.
See, last minute, last minute, no.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you. That was great, that was wonderful.
That was awesome.
Yeah, it was really great to see it all, to really get a nice picture of it. They probably could talk for an hour too, and we'd probably be wrapped, you know, following it too, so thank you. Next on the agenda is the mascot forum further discussion. We did talk a little bit last meeting, and we have to plan for next week. A couple of things I wanted to bring to our attention that have come up over the past couple of weeks. First of all is location, because it was TBD, so location is gonna be at the middle school at six-thirty next, next, next Tuesday, so we have location for it, a nice and, a good location to hold whatever capacity we might have. Then the other, the other question that has come up, which I, I think is a very easy answer, so I'll bring it to the committee, but I don't think it's, it's very difficult for us. We have Metco students in, in our school system, and we have, we did make a statement about no non-residents, non-residents were not allowed to speak, which we're very clear about, and that's all good, but I don't think that's possible with the Metco program. So a Metco student is a student in Foxborough Public Schools, they could certainly speak if they signed up, but a Metco parent, I think, would well be within any kind of parameters we could dream of to also speak. Any disagreement with that from the committee, if a Metco parent chose to sign up?
Thank you for thinking of that.
No, I think it's, they're a member of the school community.
They absolutely are.
No, thanks, no, I agree.
Great. So we'll keep, we'll keep the monitoring that too, so I don't know if we need to, Dr. Burdo, I don't know if we need to make any special communication about that. I mean, we've, we've said it here tonight, but I don't know if all Metco parents see these meetings, so...
Well, the communication went out.
Yeah, all families have it, so, so we're able to accept anyone who signs up as a resident.
Just, I don't know, I go back to the thing, the text of the framework that you, with it, the committee had outlined, was also out there, that did mention residents?
Correct.
So it may warrant a follow-up communication, if only just to make sure that there's...
Yeah, I think that's wise, would you guys agree? I think it's wise.
I don't think I'm overly stirring that pot.
No, 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 I just think, I just think it's clear, it's giving clarity.
We can have Ms. Wiley, who's our Metco coordinator, facilitate that.
If she could just, you even use our words of our, you know, just touching on the communication that the school committee did take action on Tuesday night to make sure that...
You did have, as far as when you're choosing whether you're a student or a resident or alumni, you had other, so I don't know, it could be that someone registered and clicked other and said, you know, Metco program or something like that, I don't, I don't know, but we can definitely have Ms. Wiley communicate that.
Would you ever reach out tomorrow as soon as she could? I think that'd be very valuable for us. Great.
Thank you.
Good discussion, thank you. Three, two or three other things, just to make sure we can plan for the night. First is order of speakers. So we have about forty-eight people signed up right now to speak, three minutes each, so we're pushing, we're gonna push three hours, I guess, so that's the way it is. What, order of speakers, do we randomize, do we just do when they signed up?
I don't have an answer.
Yeah.
Mr. Chair, I have a, I have two preferences, and just, they're just ideas that people can counter, countermand. Whatever order we pick, see, I skipped by it, whatever order we pick, given that people have pre-registered, I would be in favor of sending a note out to them with, here's your order.
Just in terms of management, that night, you don't wanna wait forty seconds, like, is, you know, whatever, is Mr. Smith here, is Mr. Smith here? It's like, if, 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 if we determine the order, tell people, you're number forty-eight, and we have the mics pre-set up, bum, 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 next up, you know, it's kind of like, whatever, kind of like when you go to the deli. That's one thing, and then two, and this is just a thought that anybody can disagree with, as are all my thoughts, I suppose, is it, I guess, sometimes for the benefit of the listener slash learner, it's nice to hear a chunk of people who, if we happen to know or glean, are speaking on a certain side of the, the thing, and then to break it up. Having an entire evening broken up in terms of a long period of time where we're hearing folks who might be in support, and then a long period of time where folks might be, you know, advocating for a change, might tend to wear, so mixing it up is helpful. I realize that potentially muddies the waters, I was just more thinking in it in terms of, because the forum is speaking and listening, and hopefully for everybody involved, at least to my mind, learning.
Other thoughts?
So, I do agree that we should decide on an order beforehand. Easiest is order of signup.
It is.
That's fine, I also think that people should check in if they've signed up, they should, so that way the moderator will know whether someone is not in attendance or not, we can just bypass them.
Fair.
I actually don't know if there's a, at this point, because people have signed up, and I don't know, some people may come in as neutral, hopefully. and I don't know, some people may come in as neutral, hopefully, that there's a way to ask people to determine, to self-group. I don't know the benefit of that at this point. So I don't, the last suggestion, I'm not a big fan of.
Yeah. I guess there's a benefit, but I don't, yeah, managing, that's a thing. Yeah. Apart from the logistics, Mr. Chair, I had something else, so I can wait. So let's continue on that.
Any other thoughts, Michelle, order?
I would just do it in the order of sign up. That would probably be the easiest.
Easy.
Yeah. At this point, right, we don't, when they sign up, we don't necessarily know which side they're standing on. So, yeah, just order of sign up.
I suppose that's partially for design, right?
And I would also, I would, you may have this on your agenda, but in that same vein.
Sure.
I would discourage people deferring their slot to come back and speak later.
No, I think that, I mean, in the interest of time and all involved.
And primarily for time.
I think it's that. I mean, why not, I mean, it's not a production, but you don't have all this dead air waiting for people. Like, let's just, if you came to speak, be ready to speak, and there you go. And then, that's logistics, but...
So we didn't capture emails or anything, did we? It was just straight sign up. Okay, so we don't have a way to communicate. I thought that. I kind of knew that answer coming in. So anyway, so, because we didn't have email in the thing. So I think, I'm personally in agreement with order of sign up, because I can't come up with another way. We could randomize. I've done a randomization, but I just think order of sign up is straightforward, and we can do it, and we have what it is. Are you okay with that, too? I mean, I've got three nods here, but we could...
I'm fine with that more, no, no, I'm fine with that. I guess clarifying question on that, or you can choose that it's another topic, is how do we communicate that? Because I also, in fairness, I want to be fair to the people who are coming to speak. I don't want them, like, they said I was going near the front, you know? I don't know. Can we pre-publish that?
Can we pre-publish the names?
I don't think we have their permission to publish those names.
Yeah, I don't think so either. I would...
We would have had to ask, I believe that we would have had, we would have had to have asked permission to publish their names in advance.
I agree.
There may be some people that chose to sign up and choose not to then show up.
Check in. We do this, I mean, if people, I mean, if, and they already signed up to speak, so if somebody wants to come to the forum to speak, please check in here.
Please check in.
We'll verify that you're here. Oh, yeah, we could currently have you as number 36.
Yeah.
Right. You know what I mean?
And well, and we...
I think that's a kindness.
And in our letter, we did ask everyone to try to stay to hear everything. We were trying to encourage the open dialogue with everything, right? So, okay, so we'll go, order of speakers is how they signed up, which we can have that recorded. We'll try to set up a check-in in some capacity, so we'll work on that. Good. I think the question of discouraging, you know, bouncing around, I think the two pieces that I was going to ask around, you know, can you push off your speaking moment, or if you're not there? I had both of those questions. Can you push off and say, I'll go later, or not?
Description of the monitor.
I don't know why everyone would want to do later, but I'd say we should just stick with it. You're either there and you speak, or you're not. That's personally my opinion, but anything can happen.
I don't think you should be able to defer your time. That can, if people start deferring their time, it gives them the opportunity to hear other people's things, and then set up rebuttals, and cause more, the point is, you're supposed to come and make the statement on how you feel, not based, I'm afraid that too many people will be responding to other people's statements, and if we defer.
Got it. Okay.
Because then that would put some people in a disadvantage, or, you know, or giving other people advantages to, I don't think you should be able to defer. That's my opinion.
Right. And I think with 48 people, it just becomes very difficult.
When are you gonna go? When are you gonna pick? When are you gonna go? Are you gonna go 49? Are you gonna go 42? I'd like to go after this person. Just a challenge. Okay, so no deferment, got that. And what if they're not there? They didn't check in, and they're not there?
Then they have forfeited their ability to speak.
Don't need to announce.
They can always send in, as we've encouraged.
Oh, yeah. Yep.
And as we always say, physical attendance and speaking at a forum carries the same weight as someone that takes the time to document their thoughts and send them into the school committee.
I think that's only fair.
They carry the same weight. They may not feel that they do, but they do.
Right. And if they miss the forum, they can still go to the community inbox.
Correct.
If they had something occur, they could go to the community inbox and send their thoughts to us in the community inbox, and we would get them within days.
I think that's only fair, and I believe to a person, everybody in the school committee, including Ms. Ladani previously, has said that that's...
Great.
Fine.
And just reiterating, three minutes only for everyone.
Yeah.
Not coming up a second time. Everyone gets one opportunity for three minutes. I also thought that would be very wise if we had some kind of clock, so I'll work on that. Could be a computer screen, but I think it'd be very valuable to the speakers to see the three minutes, so that they can attend to their time as well, too. So I'll work on that, or I'll ask and see if anyone has a clock already. Anything else?
Debate teams, do we have debate teams?
Oh, debate teams could have clocks, right? Don't debate?
Well, it's not, it's not the students that need issues with time, it's the grownups.
No, 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 I just need a clock. I just need a clock there, so everyone can see it.
The students are used to working on a clock.
Just try to help people, because you never know what your time slots are.
Just saying, man. No, you're right. I had one, this is a personal preference, not speaking for anyone else in the committee, and we talked about this last week, I'm just saying, for me. I find it probably more impactful if somebody comes up and says their piece for three minutes, and I know that they happen to be talking for a bunch of other people, than to hear the same thing with the same facts 10 times. That's just me, just saying. Also, interested in time. But I'm just saying for me.
Yeah.
So that if there were 10 people who had four minutes of worth of information, fine, split it up two and two. You know what I mean? That's fine. But that's, again, you're just getting my preference. The rules of the forum are the rules of the forum, so, and we'll honor those.
And we have also said previously, though, that when you are speaking, or when you are submitting something to the community box, it is very clear that the only person you are representing, and the only opinion you are representing is your own. You are not speaking for a group. So that's a...
No, thanks, Rob. I mean, appreciate it.
And I think that's what was said last time, and that's actually, I think, was said in one of the communications that went out.
Yeah, I think what we talked about in the meeting was that you wouldn't combine time. You wouldn't be one person speaking for five, so...
You couldn't defer your time to somebody else.
We said we couldn't multiply, we couldn't use it as a time multiplier.
Yeah, yeah, that's what we were talking about last week, too. Okay. Is there anything else that you can think of?
Will everyone who registers to speak get a chance to speak?
Say it again?
Will everyone who registers to speak get a chance to speak?
Of course, yes. Yeah. That's what I was thinking, three hours, 48.
And just confirming, Foxborough Cable will be broadcasting this?
They will.
It will be live, or it's just going to be a video? Do you know?
As far as I know, it's live. That's exactly what I understood to be the case.
Cool.
Anything else?
No. Thank you for your attention to all those...
Oh, we did it. We just, it's, we haven't done forums like this much, so we kind of, you know, a few little things I have to work out. And I think this is valuable. It's a great opportunity for everyone. Okay. Next on the agenda, we're behind. Uh-oh. Okay, 15 minutes behind.
You're fine.
Plan for Success, Dr. Burdus and Dr. Burrows, please. Thank you.
So the Plan for Success, as you know, is our strategic plan. It's for a four-year plan. We're in year three of that, 2021 to 2025. And you had a very lengthy report at the end of the school year in June on this. So what we're looking for tonight is for you, for a vote, to accept our action plan for year three, and what we're focusing on this year. So what we were going to do is to go over each of the pillars and just kind of highlight what our focus is for this year, because many things, by the time you get to year three, are going to be, some of them completed and ongoing, and then the focus may have shifted, because they're obviously multi-year initiatives. So the first one being pillar four, which is facilities and infrastructure, that one, the overall objective, to provide a safe, secure, supportive, responsive, and innovative learning environment for all students and staff. So we had a number of initiatives underneath that particular objective that talked about things like what you heard from our police force, you know, this evening when it comes to implementing preventative measures and practices. Also evaluating our own infrastructure, our school buildings. We talked a lot about how we had Synergy 911 come in and do full assessments and working at the state level with our buildings and making recommendations. And that is, if we were to ever have an incident, what would it look like from the town side? So any additional law enforcement that came in, they would know exactly what to do. They know our buildings, they know what roads need to be shut down, they know what needs to take place, and where all of the critical components are when it comes to that. So there's a lot of work that's been done there in the last couple of years, and we're continuing that with some of the grant funding and things that we're doing when it comes to adding additional security cameras, when it has to do with the communication within cinder block buildings and the repeaters, when you have fire, when you have police in the buildings and making sure that they're able to communicate. And then the other things that we've done, when we think about 911, when you call from any room, they know exactly where you're making that phone call from, and people can deploy resources to those areas as well. So when we look at the initiatives that are our focus for this year, so much of it, as I said, is completed or ongoing. We're looking at, just as Chief Grace talked about with that guidebook from the Mass Chiefs of Police, what are the things that we still need to look at and plan for? The checklist and such, and where we find that we want to continue to make any changes, and those kinds of things. So professional development, that comes in the form of any of our new staff that didn't have the Synergy 911 training.
Sure.
The four L training that we had last year, which comes down to locate, lock, leave, live, which is really taking ownership of anything that could happen, and making sure that everyone has emergency bags in their classrooms. They know where those are. And the training for that that took place, having that annually for all of our new staff. So that's something that's really important to continue. The thing that we talked about in June with hardening access to buildings, when we think about the mantraps, if you will, in each of the buildings, and we had the supply chain issue with getting the materials for the IGO and for Central Office. I can tell you, finally, came in. They've been constructing that over the last couple of days. So the IGO front entryway, you're going to have the double access with that, with the FOB access, with the two doors. So that's done, and then the Central Office door will be done next. And so that will complete each of those areas within our buildings.
That's great.
Other things under this would really be a focus for this year, is looking at that financial sustainability plan for the refreshment of laptops and the technology infrastructure. So that's going to be a big focus this year, and what that looks like. Because as we've continued to add laptops, or even looking at things like projectors in classrooms and those kinds of things, with bulbs, things that are no longer available, but you can't refresh all of that at once. The cycle of that, it's helped us with elementary students not taking laptops home, as an example. It's really seventh through 12th grade that are taking those home, so that has helped a lot. But at the same time, when we think about starting to refresh those, what that looks like in the machines that we're refreshing. So that's going to be a focus when we think about this particular pillar this year.
Great.
We'll move on to the second pillar.
Sure. Sure. So pillar two is teaching, learning, and pedagogy. As you know, the strategic objective for that is to provide opportunities for educators to collaborate and create common, equitable learning experiences. This year, we have added the fourth strategic initiative, so we're now inclusive of all four of those strategic initiatives that were outlined in the original Plan for Success. That fourth initiative is to develop, implement, and utilize standards-based, common assessments. That's work that will actually align really well with our vision of a graduate work, and work that we'll be doing with our curriculum and instructional leaders throughout the district this year. Some of the things that we've begun in previous years and are continuing to do, we're in years two and three in the Inclusive Instruction Academy at Borough, IGO, Taylor, and the Ahern. Part of that academy is intensive professional development. We have supports through that academy that are helping us develop multi-tiered systems of supports. We've done a significant amount of training with our staff and built those structures and systems. And as we are entering into year two and year three in that academy, we are looking at ways to develop a sustainable plan for implementing inclusive instruction moving forward. One of the things that we did this summer, we had a team of teachers get together that put together an inclusive practices playbook. So that's something that we'll be focusing on moving into this year, rolling out that playbook and offering that as a continued resource for our teachers and for our leadership team. And we're going to be taking a deeper dive into some of our student achievement data and our demographic data to make sure that the MTSS structures that we've put in place are doing their job, and making sure that as we sunset our partnership with the Inclusive Instruction Academy, that we have those systems in place and the common language in place to implement that moving forward. We've also begun in this past school year, and over the summer, we've developed common curriculum mappings in alignment with our vision of a graduate and NIASC curriculum, our NIASC review process. And you'll be seeing that soon. We're going to have a public view of a curriculum library on our district website for families and for students to take a look at, to offer that transparency in a consistent format aligned to what NIASC recommends. And in all of our work, really, the NIASC work that's happening at the high school parallels and is well-aligned to all of the inclusive instruction work that we've been doing K-8. So there is cohesion there, even if there's not participation at the high school level.
Great.
Sure.
And I, forgive me for, I was purely forgetting. And I knew that the three elementaries in Ahern were going to go through the full MTSS cycling. And then withholding ideas and judgment for the high school for a while, or was the initial plan to move that forward later, or TBD? And that's just me forgetting.
Sure. So what we've done is, we've prioritized professional development for the high school in pieces. So they've had a very similar experience to that Inclusive Instruction Academy that our other schools have.
Right.
They've just not fully participated in the academy in that same way.
Which is fine.
But our inclusive practices playbook is actually a K-12 playbook.
Okay.
And is intended to really create that overlap and that cohesion K-12.
And the, is it the language around tier one, tier two, and all that, that's still, is that currently or eventually pervading K-12?
Currently.
Awesome.
Currently, absolutely. It's part of our common practices. We have MTSS structures across K-12. And just to speak a little bit about those three components and inclusive practices that we've defined in the playbook.
Mm-hmm.
It's MTSS. It's universal design for learning. That's something that's evident and clear in our common curriculum mappings that you'll see in our curriculum library as well. And it's also co-teaching.
That's right.
And that's been a K-12 focus of ours for professional development. So even though there's not that official rubber stamp from the Inclusive Instruction Academy, they've fully participated.
Thank you for the refresher.
You're welcome.
And I think the other part that will play to that is this individual school improvement plans.
Yeah, you're right. Thank you. That's true.
Because this is the big umbrella. And so what it looks like at each of those levels, it'd be a little bit further articulated.
Thank you for the reminder. I appreciate it.
Okay. Next pillar. Pillar three is well-being. And the strategic objective there is to provide the necessary supports to ensure healthy minds and healthy bodies for all members of the school community. Much like in pillar two, we've added our fourth strategic objective to our action plan for this year. So we're now inclusive of the entirety of the objectives that were, initiatives that were laid out in the original Plan for Success. And that fourth initiative is to link evidence-based SEL programs and practices with student-centered curriculum, instruction, and environments. Much like in pillar two, our work in pillar three is actually supported through our MTSS SEL Academy as well. So we are a member of two, DESI, MTSS academies. The SEL Academy is in year three. Part of our work in year three is going to be... Part of our work in year three is going to be doing an audit of how are we implementing SEL curriculum across those multi-tiered systems of supports and making sure that it's clear, that it's consistent across K-12. We're also in year three of implementing our Panorama screener, the SEL screener that we've used across K-12. And we're continuing to use Dr. Epstein as a support and how to unpack that data with our district-wide mental health teams. And there's also been an intentional shift that will be happening this year in particular with tier one instruction, tier one SEL instruction, using the second step curriculum across K to eight to support tier one instruction and supporting, building the capacity of our school counselors and our district-wide mental health team and identifying what tier two and tier three interventions might look like for SEL and making sure that that's clear. Again, as our participation sunsets with this DESI MTSS SEL Academy, we want to make sure that those practices are sustained over time and not something that we lose when we walk away from those Academy commitments.
Point of clarification?
Sure.
What level or levels are we doing second step with?
What, K to eight.
That's K eight, thank you.
Correct.
And Panorama, remind me?
Panorama is K-12.
That's right. It's everything.
Second step is beginning to launch a nine-through-12 curriculum. We've not had a look at it yet.
Sure.
But we're certainly talking to make sure that the K-12 implementation of SEL is consistent and age-appropriate.
Thank you.
Also, just to add, when we think about under the initiative for opportunities for family support, just as you heard from our police force and by them having Christina LaRose as far as a new clinical social worker and working closely with families, that's another piece where we're in communication from things that they see, you know, whether it's over the summer or whether it's over the weekend, to be able to help support families. And so that connection, as well as even the task force that's been really put into place because of our families that have moved into the hotel, we have all of those people around the table. When we think about Pam McGuire as far as being the town social worker, and in addition to Christina LaRose and all of the other people there, it still connects with us at a district-wide when we're supporting families. Amy Muldowney, who through the grant was our community liaison and really working with some outreach programs. So those things are completed and ongoing, but those are some of the other things that are being leveraged, part of those initiatives as well. As we move on to the fourth pillar, diversity, equity, inclusion, that objective is to foster and strengthen the respect and actions of staff, students, and families to celebrate diversity, ensure equity, and practice universal inclusion. And really, this being threaded so much with our pillar of well-being, with social-emotional learning, it's about inclusive practices, it's about belonging. Opening day, really coming back to what is it that we're all working on? It's a matter of being curious, not judgmental, looking at all of our students that are there, what are their needs in order to provide equal access for all of them? At the same time, looking at our current practices from professional development and what are the needs based on what we're hearing from students? So as an example, at the end of the school year, you heard us talk about focus groups. We had talked with students, elementary, middle, and high, and hearing directly from them, asking, when do they feel like they belong? Do they feel included? What are some things that are on their mind? We took quotes from that as part of our professional development and then had that as part of our, when we came back to school in August. What are our own students saying? What does this look like? How do they feel when it comes to being in an inclusive environment? Feelings, though, that they belong? What are the takeaways that we could have that impact what we're doing from the standpoint of this plan, but just in classrooms, when it comes to teaching, learning, pedagogy, all of that, from a cultural standpoint as well? So that information's really important at the same time as we look at data for academic achievement. When we look at our population of students, it has changed over the last 10 years. So as an example, 10 years ago, if you look at the ethnicity of Foxborough, it was 90% white. Now, 10 years later, that data, it's 75% white. When we're looking at all of our populations of students, the same thing with our English-language learner population, back 10 years ago, we were at .5%. We're at 2.4%. And that's aside from the migrant crisis and what's taking place. We have students that show up in classrooms, again, that do not speak English. They've come from the Ukraine, they've come from different areas. That happens. We want to make sure that we're meeting their needs as we're meeting all students' needs. And then at the same time, what are the resources and supports that are there? But then looking at classes, looking at levels of classes, and that we are digging into that data and making sure that we're meeting the needs of all students. So that's what this comes down to. At the same time, what we're doing that's new this year is really combining at different times of the year. We have a professional development committee, we have the Social-Emotional Learning Committee, and then we have the Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Committee. There's so much of that that overlaps, so we're overlapping those meetings to be able to bring more people together. So it's not separate. It really is really well-designed and aligned when we think district-wide with those things.
I would add, too, that we're being really intentional about that overlap to help make it make sense for our teachers. And that's always our priority with professional development, that it's supporting teachers in building their own capacity and not asking them to wear 15 hats, asking them to wear one or two. So that intentionality this year with merging SEL and DEI work will be really helpful on our district PD days to support teachers and understanding and make sure that we're sustaining these practices over time.
Very good.
So that's the overview of the work this year. Lots of work.
Any questions from anyone? Lot here.
No comment is just, it's lovely to see all the elements that you had thoughtfully put into the Plan for Success now. You strung them out in terms of, in a thoughtful manner, but it's neat to see that you're getting, you're getting to everything you had put in there. It's nice.
And an important piece, too, is when we think about what our teachers and staff are doing every day with our students, that it's not one more thing. We can really focus, intertwine that because of all the hard work they're doing in classrooms. And they can see how it connects, how it aligns, but it's not more. Because they've had a lot on their plates in the last number of years. And they've done a phenomenal job with what we've had as far as these plans. But they've been aggressive at the same time.
Yes. Been very ambitious, and we've talked about that, that's great. But it's measured ambition in that there are other places where initiatives get dropped, and it's steps one through three, as opposed to here's step one. Let's focus on this, do it well, and then move on. So I appreciate the thoughtful pacing that you and your team put into this stuff. So, thank you.
I think there's great details as well, too. The one thing I was just going to mention, when I got to the end of the document where we defined equity and we defined inclusion.
I thought that was a great couple paragraphs.
Yeah.
It brought me right, it centered me well. And I was thinking, if anyone wants to know what those two things are happening, those four bullet points, nail it. So I thought that was actually, I really enjoyed that section as I was going through. I'm like, we just perfectly defined, and perfectly is a little bit of a leap, very effectively defined equity. And I thought that was very good and clear, and inclusion. And that's so critical to know what those are going in with DEI initiatives. Because that, the word equity can be misused very badly, so.
And it's all, and it's all right on the website, too.
Yeah.
All of the plans, the action plans, the updates, they're all right there on the main webpage, too.
So people that want to go see a perfect deposition of equity?
That's what I was thinking.
They can go on the website.
Go on the website, pull the, if you want to see detail about what's really going on at the school system from a visionary, that's what the whole detail is. But equity and inclusion are right there, so check it out. So I do think we need action from the school committee?
I make a motion that we approve the Plan for Success action plans for the 2023-2024 school year.
Thank you, motioned.
I second.
Seconded by Michelle.
I second the motion to accept the Plan for Succession.
So Robyn and Michelle, thank you. Any further discussion?
No.
Only favor approval of the plan, one, two, three, four, four zero vote. Thank you very much. I didn't mention to anyone that Mrs. Ladani is not in town right now, so she is absent from the meeting. I guess I should have said that an hour ago. All right. Next on the agenda is superintendent's goals.
Okay. So as you are well aware, one of your three main functions is the evaluation of the superintendent. And part of that is this time of year, presenting my goals to you for your acceptance. I have the goals here, but one of the other things that I wanted to propose is when we think about the evaluation system, which the model system came out in 2012 from the Department of Education. It's a two-year process, if you will, for educators. But for administrators, it was a one-year, and that had been the case. When we think about, for instance, a two-year time period for teachers, they present their goals in the first year, sometimes they can be multi-year goals. The end of their first year is their formative assessment, and then they go into their second year, and at the end of their second year is their summative. For administrators, it has been one year. It's a summative every year. In 2019, guidelines came out, and they change with MASC. And for, if you have an experienced administrator, you could go to a one-year, I mean, I'm sorry, I'd go to a two-year, to where it would be more in line with that two-year model of a formative assessment at the end of the first year and then the summative at the end of the second year. So I have you keep that in mind as I go through with the goals. So this time of year is going to be the goals. I have four goals that are going to be presented here. And then the next part of that cycle, if you will, would be implementing that, having a check-in in February. And then at the end of the school year, I present progress towards goals, other evidence towards the four standards that all of us are evaluated on, and then you write a summative. What I'm going to be proposing is that the definition of an experienced superintendent, in my case, is anyone that has been in the role for three years or more. And being that I will be beginning year six, starting in January, which seems crazy at the same time. I'll be proposing that we move to a two-year cycle of what they came out with in 2019. So with that said, it still is the time of year when I would present the goals. So I have four goals here. And I also noted here, and you have in your packet, MASC's Guide for Evaluating the Superintendent.
Yeah.
Because I think that it's timely in that we just finished the agenda for our Plan for Success. Because the superintendent's goals really should be the work of that plan. And that drives the district forward, it's the district's vision, it's the work that we all work on together through the different initiatives that take place, and we all have different roles in that. But again, it really shouldn't be any significant changes from what's in that plan, because that is the work of the district. So these goals are based on the district's Plan for Success, as well as anything else that might be unique to the year, as you'll see in Goal Four for me. We all have to have a professional practice goal and a student learning goal, and then either a school or a district improvement goal. So my professional practice goal here is to support the capacity of the leadership team and provide personalized and differentiated support according to their needs. As you know, we had a lot of new administrators last year and a lot of time supporting them, but that support cannot end in the second year, as we have new people here that are new to the district. They may be new or not new to their roles, but really supporting them in a differentiated way and supporting them and carrying out their own school improvement plans and what that looks like. So that would be a matter of providing the unique support to each of them and what that looks like. It ends up being, from a professional stance, for me, everyone is different, just as students are different in a classroom, and being able to support their needs accordingly, that requires thinking and problem-solving and being creative and helping people so I can be the best support to them. Just as they hopefully learn from me, I learn from them as well, too. So as I learn from them, that's part of your own professional practice. When we say teachers are getting to work with teachers, it's the best embedded form of professional development. It's embedded professional development for myself, too, as I work with our very talented leadership team. The second goal, which is the student learning goal, will look familiar to you as it's continued as we talk about the multi-tiered system of support. However, the key actions underneath that, there are new ones that are there, and there are ones that have changed as well. So that goal to work through MTSS and to ensure equity, access, and inclusivity, when we look at, well, what does that look like in year three? We've talked about it, outlined in the Plan for Success. Other pieces that will be new is our tiered focus monitoring through the Department of Education this year, particularly, this is our year that will be heavy on civil rights. What does that look like, making sure that we're meeting the needs of our students? That's going to take some time this year, looking at what we talked about before, evaluating the effectiveness of tiered supports and the social-emotional learning and the programs that we've done, how that plays out. You know, we gave the example of teachers will be with second step as an example, where that was with our adjustment counselors last year. How does that play out this year as teachers take on that tier one with the SEL piece? And guidance counselors, adjustment counselors are really focusing more on tier two and three, different interventions, and taking an audit of those practices and see how that plays out.
Clarification on that point. Is that something that you and your team have to prepare and provide for DESI? Or is that an independent audit that DESI has to do based upon our data?
So two things, the tiered focus monitoring.
That's the one, yeah.
That's the one that we have to prepare for DESI. They will come out and do a site visit as well. They'll look through all of our documents, and they'll see how we're ensuring access
Sure.
and equity.
Have they set a timeline for that?
October and then February.
Yes. So we've already had our initial meeting. Mr. Michael Azic and myself worked on
Sure.
the TFM review in the spring. And we've already had our initial meeting. There's meeting dates in late September. We're going to get the criteria for where we need to improve specifically. And then there's a training date to talk about what that site visit will look like, and the site visit is slated for February.
And are we, in the way that that's conducted, are we grouped with other districts, or do they do it as a one-to-one?
It's one-to-one.
Oh, okay.
For us, it's one-to-one, but there's districts that have their TFM depending on the cycle and where they are.
It's their turn.
It's an accountability piece from the Department of Ed.
Sure.
And all districts go through this, and it looks different. Like, last year was more heavy on special education.
Yeah.
And this year it'll be on civil rights.
Okay. Thank you.
Other couple of key actions here that I think that are noteworthy is when we're looking at our inclusive practices through professional development, but really that flexible employment of resources.
Sure.
So when we think about our English-language learner population and growing and teachers, where our numbers are and how much they've grown over time. So as an example, when I was the Assistant Superintendent, going back 12 years ago, we had seven students. We've more than quadrupled the number of students that we have, aside from the migrant crisis and what we're having as far as increase in number of students, that English is not their first language.
Sure.
So supporting our classroom teachers with students that don't speak English, as well as our English learner teachers, and the resources, what are the needs? Is it a matter of increasing in the future the number of L- Is it a matter of increasing in the future the number of L teachers based on the increasing population of students? Those kinds of things are going to be really important as we get into the budget cycle this year as well, and then working with our classroom teachers' needs, supports, and then our, our English learner teachers as well. And then the other piece here that is going to be an important part is that vision of the graduate and working with the high school through Niasc, and looking at, like, scheduling. We know is one of the things that we're talking about at the high school, scheduling committee, what that looks like in order to be able to meet the needs of the high school.
By way of reminder, can you remind us and anyone else, the next steps for them? Is it December? Or, sorry, when are they looking at their next step?
So we have been solidifying what the vision is. We did that in August with our expanded leadership team. That's now going to different staff meetings to be able to get feedback on what was identified through that, and we're doing some wordsmithing that's taking place. And, is it October?
It's October.
Yeah. When the, the next step, when they come back. There's so many different steps along the way.
There's so many steps. Okay. And that's their review of your submission, that's not the site, that's different, that's later?
Right. So right now, we're really trying to solidify what the vision of a graduate, that articulating that and getting that out to all staff, because it's not just about high school.
No.
It's what do you need to do coming out of kindergarten? What does that look like? Because we know kindergarten is, it plays into our graduates by the time they leave. So what does it look like at kindergarten, at third grade, at seventh, all along the continuum?
That's, that's really the primary focus in the October visit. The other piece is the scheduling piece that, that, that's not an October deadline. We have plenty of time.
The reason I was, I mean, I was asking most, it's beyond curiosity, although I am curious. It's the, because usually if you're talking about schedule changes, that has an implementation on budget, yada, yada, yada.
And that's going to have to be a study and looking at that. That is not something that can happen quickly.
Good. That's not a now-to-December problem.
Oh, goodness, no.
Thank you.
No.
Good.
So the third goal, the district improvement goal, to closely monitor and enhance the capacity of the Foxborough Public Schools to address issues of educational equity, including student achievement, school belonging, connectiveness, and disproportionality. So again, this is really focusing on the students, all students that are in our schools, looking at meeting their needs to where we are looking at the, the belonging aspect, but we're looking at the student achievement aspect, and we're disaggregating that data as well. And that also is a matter of where do we see issues that need to be addressed? Is it a matter of, you know, district data from an academic achievement? Is it a matter of support from social-emotional learning? Those are things that we, we look at now, but taking a deeper dive into some of that data. Also, what are our practices? Our culturally responsive strategies in classes? It comes back to professional development, but again, continuing to learn. And so Stephanie and I will be, we will be leading, so a lot of these things, when you see these goals, we partner with this, because we're going to co-lead some of these book studies and see if we can get people to join us on some of this when it gets into culturally responsive practices. A lot has been done, but we're going to continue this focus, because the more that we can have people at the table talking together, then the greater impact we can have in each of the classrooms. Plus, it's just fun.
It's good for everyone.
The fourth goal.
Dr. Berdus, before you go on, I did have a question on one bullet point, on the key action. I don't understand the bullet. It's the one right underneath the book study. It's about continuing to address best practices.
Thank, thank you. So, and I had highlighted that, too, and I meant to say something here. So one of the things that the Department of Ed looks at in our data, if we have disproportionality, when it looks at special education, when it looks at social-emotional learning, when it looks at our groups of students, when we have a large enough N factor to be able to report out. So when we, in this case, we had been identified for disproportionality, for the identification of Black and Brown students for academic opportunities, and looking at that data. So we need to look at that more closely to make sure that the opportunities and access were there. When we see something that seems askew, based on, it could be any group, it could be special education, or it could be Black and Brown students. If our data stands out, why is that? What is that? And so that is an area that's targeted, to be able to look at classes, access, levels, or just achievement.
Yeah.
Okay. So, thank you. I just want to make sure I understand. So we currently, based on the analysis, believe that there's a disproportional, that, that Black and Brown students are disproportionately identified.
With some of our academic achievement data.
Are they missed? They are, they are, it's a dispro, they are, are they lack access, proportional access to opportunity? We've identified that that's a, that's something that we need to look more at.
We want to look at that more and to investigate, to see those practices, just as at the same time, with our special education students, when we look at achievement data there, you'll hear, you know, a little bit more of that when we break that apart in our baseline and benchmarks report in the November.
Well, this is something that you might not have seen 15 years ago, when demographically, you know, the, the town looked a little more homogeneous than it does now.
Yeah, no, I, I mean, I just didn't understand the way this was worded. I wasn't sure what we were doing, or what, what your goal was, what the action was with this. So I understand better now. Thank you.
Thank you.
And then the last goal, to review all aspects of staffing and efficiencies across all operations departments to respond to the state of emergency migrant crisis and the impact of students enrolling in schools as a result of being placed in a Foxborough hotel. So that is something that, it impacts classrooms, it impacts budget. However, again, we are being compensated by the state. So this is not our local budget. I think that's really important. It's a per-pupil basis allocation that comes in from the state here. So that's when we're hiring additional staff. That is paid for through the state. It is not our budget. At the same time, really focusing to make sure that we're meeting the needs of all of our students. And the task force that I mentioned before, that's our town task force, but as an example, when we talk about Foxborough being a smaller town and a low incidence district, when we think of the number of students that don't speak English as compared to if you looked at an Attleboro or a Taunton or your, or your cities, and the resources that are required, so that's one of the things that I've been saying to my contacts at the state, is that we're in a different situation by not being in a city. You don't have the same resources as a city does, and it's important that they hear our voice. And so when I was talking, they asked if I wanted to be on the state, if I'd be on our state task force. I'm like, absolutely, to be able to get that voice there. So that's one of my actions, is to continue to make sure that the voice of our town is shared at the state level as well. But importantly, to be able to make sure that we're supporting our teachers, our staff, and all of our students here, as, we, we don't have a choice, right? This is a state crisis, and we're required to, as a right to shelter state, to be able to enroll our students immediately, but at the same time, to be able to support our families, but what are the resources and needs, and to look for those from a teaching standpoint, from an operational standpoint, and to monitor that from a resource, but also from a professional development stance, and to really be listening to our teachers and to hear their needs from teachers and staff and administrators.
I was thinking, like, last year, different, different time, different situation, you and your team had to really get into the texture of staffing, budget, and services, but it was specifically in light of the changing federal funding supports and regime. And this is a whole other ball of wax, but you're still having to go through that level of detailed analysis. It's interesting.
Thank you. Any further questions of the goals? Thank you for the detail. Thank you.
So that, that's really the, your vote to accept the goals is one, but really, I was interested in your thoughts on that five-step evaluation cycle with moving to a two-year cycle versus a one-year cycle. It actually changes more for you as a school committee than it does for me personally. It, it helps you more, you're still having the goals, you're still reporting out on the goals. It's the summative piece that you write annually. That is what would change. That would go in the summative at the end of the two-year cycle. It also aligns with the Plan for Success, where there's two years left of the Plan for Success, so it makes it more cohesive.
Would there be, in this model, would, would we, Dr. Berdus and Mr. Chair, at the end of year one of the two-year cycle, still submit the formative? It'd be a formative then a summative, not just?
It would be me, I would, what I do in February, when I report out to you?
Yeah.
So you're, what we've done is, what's progress to date on goals, on the standards? And then what we've also done, where we've talked about, what am I really proud of? What have I worked hard on? What continues to be the biggest challenge? That would just shift from February to June, and unless, at the formative, you feel as though the ratings from the prior year need to change, they stay until the summative.
Correct. Interesting.
We wouldn't be writing something new.
You wouldn't be writing something new at that point, until the, the summative, which would be at the end of the two years.
For our discussion tonight, I would say we should have two votes. I think we should vote on the, the new cycle process, the new cycle two process. That's my thoughts. Just to vote a two-year evaluation cycle, if we choose that, and then we can vote to accept our goals as well. I think, would that be okay with you, Dr. Berdus, as well?
You mean, separate them?
Separate them.
I think we should separate them.
Yeah, I'm thinking, because we're changing, that was my thought, because we're changing the process, and we're going to adopt this five-step evaluation cycle, but, so I just thought the two could actually remain separate. That was just an idea I had.
No, they're two, I think they're two distinct things.
That's what I was thinking.
Yeah.
Two sets of questions.
So just clarification, because the change in the process is not specifically listed on the published agenda, are we able to vote on that tonight?
You could do a different vote at another time on the, it could be something potentially that's reached by consensus, or just do the goals tonight. Think about it, and we can come back at another time. We have plenty of time, you have a year to two years.
Yeah, I mean, I don't, I personally don't have a problem voting on it tonight, but I just don't know, because it's not specifically listed on the agenda, whether we're able to vote on that tonight.
That aside, Mr. Canfield, I would advocate voting on the goals tonight, if the committee's comfortable on that, and moving a vote pending other, any other committee questions and discussions between committee members and Dr. Berdus on the two-year question for a different meeting. I was, I was going to propose that anyway, regardless of what, regardless of what the agenda said, but that's just me.
Can I offer a counter to that?
You can always offer.
So I, I, I think your question's great. I didn't even think about that. I would have probably gone the other direction, but good question. So I think if we're going to go with that, I think we should vote them both at the next meeting, because in my head, if we're about to vote the goals, knowing it's really a one-year plan of a two-year, but we didn't vote the two-year in, I'm not sure we're doing the right thing. I think we could vote them by themselves.
Oh.
I, you follow me? So, so the goals that we're about to vote in, if we, if we vote a two-year plan, the goals we're about to vote in are exactly what they are, and they're going to be a part of this process, that it's a formative, you know, indicator in June, just, you know, progress, as opposed to evaluation. That would be the type of goals that they are, and that's what we're going to do with those goals. It's probably not changing them. So that, that would be, that would be the counter argument, right? It's not going to change them no matter what. But that would be my only thought. So I could probably go either way. I really could. They're probably not going to change, no matter whether we vote it now or not, but that was just my thought. So what do you think? Yeah.
So on that note, Dr. Berdus, if we defer voting on the goals until the first meeting in October, does that have any impact on you at this time?
It does not have any impact on me. The psych, it's still a five-step cycle. The, the cycle is, you're still doing everything you've done in the past, and the goals, I'm still going to report out on them annually, so none of that, none of that changes.
You mean, you're, you're still going to push forward the Plan for Success?
I realize that.
No.
I know it was an obvious question.
The goals won't change, because they're still based on the year.
Yeah.
Right. And you're, understood. That's fair. Then...
So, so do I have, am I starting to sense that maybe we'd like to push off?
So this would be the October 13th meeting?
Yeah, put it on the October 3rd meeting.
I'm, I'm out and out saying I would like to push off.
Yeah, well.
I would push it off.
But I appreciate that.
Everyone okay with that? Do we, I don't, do we need to take a motion to push it off and not take action? No, we should just take no action.
Table.
Uncomfortable?
Yes.
Yeah, good. Yeah, very good discussion, everyone. That's good. Thank you for the detail. Thank you.
And you have that whole MASC guidebook that was done in 2019, of, of why I am proposing this from 2019.
Well, and, no, and I'll, thank you for the proposal, because we had, we had discussed back in August, June, that, you know, we, you know, wanted to hear your thoughts on this, so I appreciate it.
Good job. Thank you for catching it, Rob. That's a very good thought. Acceptance of donation. Foxborough Touchdown Club.
Oh, yeah. Let's get it.
Get there.
Is this the, all right, sorry, I lost it.
I have it, it's a donation of $4,000 for two.
Is this for the assistant coaches?
Two assistant coaches, yeah.
Yes.
May I? Bless the amount, don't it? I move to accept with deep gratitude the donation of $4,000 from the Foxborough Touchdown Club to support additional coaching for our kids.
Second?
Second by Mr. Canfield, proposed by Mr. Ritter. Any further discussion on the donation? Hearing and seeing, all in favor? Four zero vote. Thank you very much. Please send us a great thank you with gratitude to the Touchdown Club. Thank you. Other matters. We put under, under matters, standing agenda item for discussion, and it was specific to last, I think it was our last meeting, discussion about the park and rec, Parks and Recreation update. So I think it's a, I think the discussion is actually, the first part, Parks and Recreation happens to be the vehicle to get there. The first part is standing agenda items, and, and this happens to be a Parks and Recreation reference. So any thoughts or any opinion of people on standing agenda items such as that?
I'll go. I think at this time, that for any of the standing committees or subcommittees that any of the members or Dr. Berdus or Dr. Burrows participate in, they should only be agenda items when there is something that is pertinent to the business of the school committee. That would be my recommendation, that they should not be standing, or that would be my preference, that they should not be standing agenda items, that they should be specific when there is something that is pertinent to the business of our school committee.
Thank you for that. Thank you very much. Any additional thoughts by any other members? Well, I'll echo it, I'll echo that as well, too. I do appreciate all the participation on standing committees that have great value, but I think the real critical thing for a school committee in organizing an agenda is the business of the school committee as an agenda item should be the business that's before the school committee, not just the updates of whatever committees are. Dr. Berdus serves on multiple committees on behalf of the school district and our, and our, and our group as well, but we don't get an update every minute. If there was an update for the BICO Collaborative, it would go on as an agenda item, because we would have to take action. And we all might serve on other committees. So I, I totally agree. I think agenda items that are put on in advance with forethought for the school committee to act must be those actions that the school committee must take action on. And it just, it's a unique situation that some of our committees are updates and just information. So I, I'm in agreement with Mr. Canfield as well. I would pass on this discussion decision at this time.
Okay. Okay.
So, does it make sense?
It does make sense, and I do remember another issue coming up last... And I do remember another issue coming up last meeting, and I can't remember what it was and why this couldn't, because then I opened it up for a bunch of other committees. No, I mean, CPAC, I mean, I just give updates. I don't think CPAC needs to be or should be a standing item on the agenda when there is something to say, I will bring it. But I thought there was some other reason now, and I cannot recall what it was. But I hear what you're saying now, and I'm, okay.
It's not, for me, for me personally, it's not that we shouldn't be open about what's happening. It's just the fact of the matter is, is that an update from a meeting that doesn't necessarily involve any action of the school committee or anything under the school committee purview is just an update. It's not an agenda.
It's an information.
That's my thinking, is, right? You know, is, and I appreciate Sarah's update. They're fabulous. In general, I think...
And in the end, they don't change.
No, they don't. In the end, it's an update of what took place at the rec meeting.
Yes, there's no action on, in particular, in that particular instance, there is no action on the part of the school committee that has ever been requested from one of those updates. We don't vote on anything. We don't, it's not information only, it is simply a public service announcement about the activities of the recreation department.
Yeah, I think that's the piece of the puzzle.
Okay.
Brett, any additional thoughts? No.
Actually, I don't, which is rare for me, so. Enjoy the silence.
No action at this point? I see no motion?
Okay.
Okay, great.
I do have a Parks and Rec update from Ms. Dottie.
Sure. I think, I think, I think that's fine. I mean, I don't think updates are a problem, so.
I do have one.
Thank you.
No, we were just talking about it being a standing thing.
That's all.
No, I understand that. But if that is, if we're, my assumption is we're done with the...
I think you can, you can do it. Yes, it's just...
So now it's time for the actual update. And there was also, was going to update on the Metco Community Cousins that Dr. Berdus brought up. So thank you, Dr. Berdus, for bringing up that item, because we were going to bring that up as well. But for the Foxborough Rec Department, we are highlighting the fall offerings for the school-aged kids by the recreation department, which will include babysitter training, home alone safety, kids' night out, paint night, and pumpkin carving. Another thing coming up is the Halloween Parade. It will be on Saturday, October 28th, 2:30 to 4:00. And for the last update, the work is scheduled to begin on the Debbie Girard...
Girodino.
Girardino Pavilion, any day now.
Great.
So, thank you.
Thank you. Any other others?
I, can I just propose, because Nathan sits here dutifully every time, and we always save him to the very, very end. When we start doing this at the end, I would love to make sure that Nathan goes first, and that way he gets everybody's undivided attention, because he is dutiful in sitting here at every meeting.
You can go first, but you do always have my undivided attention, as we probably also.
Thank you. There's 12 days to our first break from school, which is nice. It's a professional day. So we can have some more of those this year. I think that's fine with all the kids.
Love it.
That's it.
Thank you, Nathan. Thank you very much. Down the line, Dr. Burrows, why don't you start? Any other?
I don't have any other matters tonight. I'll pass.
I would just like to thank all of our teachers and staff and our families that have come to all of the open houses from preschool all the way up, because their rooms look outstanding, the welcome that they've provided for all of our families, our families showing up and being out there. It's just been, again, I know I said it at the beginning in the update, but it's just been a great start to the year.
Thank you. Brett?
Thank you, and to everyone who coaches a sport that plays outside and has had to jockey their schedule, their transportation, their reschedule, their non-schedule, their cancellation.
Laundry.
Everything, so. Thanks.
Thank you. I just have a question. I meant to bring it up at the beginning during the superintendent update. Transportation made some changes. Has there been, has there been any feedback around the changes, or have there been any significant, how was coverage on bus drivers, that kind of thing? I apologize for not asking it during your update.
The five-minute change for elementary and middle school has not, that has been helpful on our end, but have not had any, you know, concerns brought forward from families on that.
But we're seeing a positive result.
Yes, so that has been helpful. We still are in need of bus drivers. Lynn, who is the transportation manager, she is pretty much driving daily. So we're in the process of hiring our other person there, but she's, she's been doing an extraordinarily amount of work in talking with families and answering emails and all of the things that go on within the transportation office, and then on top of that, driving as well. So really, a shout-out to her and to our bus drivers, but we still are in need of bus drivers. So thank you for asking that.
Thank you.
And that was it.
Thank you. I was just going to close with a sports thing as well. You just mentioned about the rain. But I walked into the meeting today and I saw Nathan across the room, and I said, what a great game you had the past couple weekends, some great football games, very exciting for you and for the team and everything. But what occurred to me is that I would just, as we start fall sports and start our year,